All this meeting, the board Franklin County Commissioners, Janet Roque.
Commissioner Stottermeyer.
President.
Commissioner Harris.
President.
Chair Dunn.
President.
Vice Chair Dickinson.
President.
Commissioner Waymeyer.
You're joining for the pledge of allegiance.
The citizens of the United States of America and to the republic from which it stands, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. I'll be seeing. Well, we got some good news today. Derek, want to just start off with Christie and?
Yeah, Christie, come on up.
Had a nice article in the Ottawa Herald yesterday.
Thank you.
Go ahead.
So for 2022, the American Heart Association was able to recognize us for excellence with STEMI care, which is the most severe type of heart attack that you can suffer. It was based off of 2022 data, and I did bring the award so I could show it to you all. Just a nice plaque. But there are four measures and then an additional one where you can get a PLUS award. And you can see, we actually got the PLUS as well, too. So what we're looking at and what they grade us on is anybody that has chest pain that's not related to a trauma, they want to make sure that we're doing a 12-lead EKG, which is more than just sticking some electrodes on your extremities. It actually looks at 12 different views of your heart. And it can allow us in the field to see if you're having what we call a STEMI, which is that heart attack, because it shows changes on the EKG. So our first measure is that every patient that complains of chest pain that's 35 years or older, we do a 12-lead on, which we were compliant with, all four quarters of 2021. Second measure is that we do that within 10 minutes of making contact with the patient, which again, we did all four quarters of 2021. Sorry, that was the PLUS measure, was that you do it within 10 minutes. Second measure was that we give an alert to the cath lab if we see these EKG changes, which we, again, compliant with all four quarters. Our third measure is that we actually have them to the hospital that can actually go in with a cath lab and put in a stent or do open-heart surgery, that they are there on the table to have their procedure done within 90 minutes. 100% compliance with that one, all four quarters. And then the last one is, again, it has to do with the hospital as well. And that's that that clot or whatever is actually retrieved within 120 minutes. And again, 100% compliance, all four quarters.
Very cool. You know, I know, I've called the ambulance for all my husband a couple of times. And you know, you think, we're going to put him in the ambulance and they're going to go. But they don't. You know, they're, they're sitting there for a while. And they're doing a lot more than just loading them up and taking them away.
Right. There's a lot of diagnostics that we do in the house before we ever go out to the ambulance. And particularly in the case with the STEMI, we need that key piece of information because we need to take them somewhere where they have a cath lab so they can go in and, and fix the blockage. And our closest one's Alefa, so.
Hey, it's not, not often that our efforts can get recognized in such a tangible way, which is what's nice about this. I mean, this county is fortunate to have a fantastic ambulance service. And Christie's certainly done an excellent job. We talk about it all the time. So, super proud of her, super proud of her staff. I wish there were more things like this because it, it's flattering and reflects very well on her and EMS in general, so.
And this is actually something that's done at the crew level. So it's actually their efforts that got us the award. That through just an excellent training program is what's kept us up with, with the latest standards.
Very cool. Congratulations.
Thank you.
Yeah, it's great that the ambulance service is keeping up with the latest and best technology out there and, and this demonstrates the effort they do to meet the highest standards they can and saving lives, basically.
Yes.
Congratulations to you and the entire ambulance department.
Anything else? All right. Thank you.
Okay, Derek, do you have anything else this morning?
No, sir.
Okay. Public comment?
Nope.
Consider agenda, we got the minutes of the June 29th meeting. Study session on 11th, claim vouchers, 242,392.54, tax change, positive $40.76. entertain a motion for the consent agenda.
Motion to approve.
Begging.
Commissioner Stottermeyer.
Yeah.
Commissioner Harris.
Yes.
Commissioner Dickinson.
Yes.
Commissioner Waymeyer.
Yes.
Chair Dunn.
Yes. Okay, first item up for bid is consider the 288 school resource officer proposal.
Morning, Commissioner. As said, this is a consideration of a proposal for a, to add a school resource officer to the Central Heights School District. As we discussed at study session, to fulfill this contract, we would need to add a position to cover that. And we drafted a contract in which the USD 288 would be responsible for all the pay and benefits for, for this employee. And I was asked at that, at that meeting to kind of get some numbers together as to what the county's contribution would be towards that partnership. And so I do have those numbers to come, to onboard someone, a, a brand-new position when you're talking about the hiring process, adding a vehicle, uniforms, and all the equipment that would be necessary. That initial part would be, and this is our estimates at this point, is $61,820. There are some ongoing expenses, such as fuel, vehicle maintenance, training, and then like to start the regular licensing that we have for our systems and, and things like that. As we discussed at the, on Monday's meeting, I, my intention, and I would not, I'm not asking to go out and buy an extra vehicle to do, to, to add, to cover this position. What my request would be is that when we have our rotation vehicles come in, that instead of sending all of those out onto Purple Wave, that we hold one back that we would be able to use for, for this position. So that does kind of mitigate some of those expenses, but yet we still are providing, providing that vehicle. This was the school board, Central Heights School Board did meet Monday. And, and I, and I did do a presentation for them at that point. Commissioner Dickinson was also there observing. And the school board did approve the contract. And I do have copies of that signed contract that they've signed here so that if it is a desire of this board to also approve that, then we could, I have that here. We could get, we could get that taken care of on our side. What we have done, we are advertising already to, to, for a patrol deputy so we could backfill that position. As I had indicated before, we do have some interest in serving internally and serving in this position. And we've already started working on getting the selection board set up so that we can get this done pretty soon, if, if this is the desire of the board as well. One of the concerns that we, a couple of the concerns that we had, one of them being that onboard training that we need to do for a school resource officer, because those SRO schools are not, they, they were full. There is an online thing that they would have to do. As I mentioned, there are a lot of sets, there are a set of statutes that will apply to that school resource officer that don't apply to other law enforcement officers. So, but there's an online version of that that they could get accomplished. And we can get them set up with the, the training that they would need to be onboard for, for that process. So we do feel that we're in a position, although it, it will make things tight, we do believe that we're in a position where we could fulfill the, the terms of this contract at, at this time. So, other than that, I'd be happy to answer any questions that you all may have.
And, and to be clear, Jeff, you talk about USD 288 providing salary and benefits. And, and I know this is semantics, but the county is providing the salary and benefits.
Well, that is correct.
This is still our employee, but this contract is for them to pay us
That is correct.
the cost of the salary. Like, they'll still be on our payroll, on our benefits. They're just paying us.
That is, that is correct. And, and I apologize if I, for, for that. Yes, this is a contract where they would make quarterly payments to the county. This person is on our payroll. They're still supervised by us. They, they're still, they, they would still be a sheriff deputy. Not, they're not a police officer working for the school district. So the total that, that the school district would be paying over the, over the life of this contract, which is, would go from August 1st to July 31st of, of 2023. That total sum is $72,255. And they would make quarterly payments of $18,063.75 with that first installment being due on August 31st of this year.
And I believe you said this Monday, but to be clear, this amount includes the proposed pay increase that we discussed during your budget.
Yes, and I explained to the, to the school district that it does include that. I didn't anticipate this number changing. However, if the proposed increases are, are, are not approved, then at that point, it would actually reduce, reduce their costs. So, and they, they understood that. One of the things that, that they really touched on, one of their board members, was the fact that all of our staff goes through the, the first, goes through a first aid, CPR, AED course, and that we have the tactical medical training that we do. And that they, they are all, all of our staff carry Narcan and have, and have that training. And those are things that they thought were also important for them. They understand that we are not medics, but we have enough training to hopefully keep people around long enough so that Christie and her crew can get there in timing and get them the help that they, that they truly need. And they, they were appreciative of that, so.
The only thing I would, and I, we kind of talked about this, is 11B says, "Make every effort to provide an SRO deputy for school sanctioned activities and functions." And during their discussion, they, they, they kind of were saying that they would probably do what they were doing already, which is to contact with deputies. And, and that this person wouldn't need, wouldn't necessarily, as a part of his duties, be, but that needs to be clear with everyone so that they don't feel like he has to be there as part of this.
Yes.
But if he chooses to do that for additional pay, then I just, I think everyone should be on, should be on the same page.
Yes, the, the way that it is current, that it currently works when they need security for their ballgames and other events is that they, they do an individual contract. That we, we have it set up, so we have an off-duty coordinator. They contact that person in our office, and they hire two of our people. And they pay them directly as, as an off-duty status for them. Our, the way our policy is written, if it allows them to do that, once they have to take any type of law, official law enforcement action in that, then they, they automatically go on the clock. And that's, it covers them and the, the school district and our, and the, and the county on, from a liability perspective. And that's, it's a pretty common way to, to do those things throughout. So, but yes, that is correct. The reason we weren't at the way that we did is because they, as we discussed, they do want that SRO to have the first dibs on all of those types of assignments, simply because it's another opportunity for them to build relationships with the people down there in that district, so.
Would that be additional pay, though?
What's that?
Would they be paid that additional, like?
Yes, because they would be there doing it off-duty unless they decided, they had an agreement that they would just adjust their hours for that day or something like that. So, from discussing it with the superintendent, this was something that, it, it can be flexible on that.
And at Monday, you had not had a chance to look at it.
Yeah, I have. And, and I think it's a good agreement. I, I like the language in 11B. I think it provides flexibility. And I think our partnership with 288 is such that I'm not concerned about. I like giving the SRO dibs on the assignments. And I think it's understood they would get paid extra for that. No, I don't have, this is similar to what we do with the city of Pomona, as we talked about. There's additional language in here to address the duties of the SRO, obviously. But no, I, I, I'm fine with the agreement.
Do you have somebody on the staff that could jump in, if this SRO officer is sick or, or vacation or something like that?
Yes, we, we, as you know, we have the former, a former educator and principal from Central Heights who is a part-time deputy with us, who has indicated he'd be willing to, to step in and, and kind of backfill some of those days if, if our SRO is going to, going to be gone, so.
That's a great question, Roy.
Any other questions? Well, I entertain a motion on this item.
Make a motion to approve the contract with USD 288 for a school resource officer.
Second.
Commissioner Harris.
Yes.
Commissioner Dickinson.
Yes.
Commissioner Waymeyer.
Yes.
Commissioner Stottermeyer.
Yes.
Chair Dunn.
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, we're going to discuss considering bids for the painting here. I don't see Brandon here yet.
Yeah, no, I, I've, I've got this, Roy. Yeah, the, the cover sheet speaks for itself. The exterior paint on the annex is peeling. We've got complaints from some of our tenants, or complaints may be a little harsh, but they notice and have brought it to our attention. And so this could have been a consent agenda item, frankly. We are just asking for permission to solicit bids. Once we have those, we'll bring them back in front of you for consideration of the project.
Okay, that's pretty straightforward. You're authorizing to Brandon to solicit bids for the paint, the annex.
Make that motion.
Okay. Commissioner Dickinson.
Yes.
Commissioner Waymeyer.
Yes.
Commissioner Stottermeyer.
Yeah.
Commissioner Harris.
Yes.
Chair Dunn.
Yes. Okay, next item is up for inclusion or it's our budget.
So commissioners attached to your agenda packet this time was the budget summary for the proposed budget. As you know, we had our study sessions for all of, where you met with all of the department heads and reviewed all of these budget numbers. If you go back to, if you go back to the numbers that we discussed, they will similarly match up to your proposed budget year 2023 with a few adjustments for the salaries, as you guys discussed during your study session, have all, have all been updated. So you, you would see that all of those proposed budget numbers in 2023, budget authority for expenditures would match what was in our team's budgets that we presented to you. If you look down in the, on the right-hand side, on the last column, it says our proposed mill levy is 53.843. Right below that, immediately, the revenue neutral rate is 52.567. So that shows that our mill levy would increase over the revenue neutral rate, just a little bit over one mil. If you look at our assessed valuation, a, a mil will generate $325,780. And as Derek has discussed a lot about how much the total cost of the raises that we are going to provide for the employees in this budget is significantly higher than $325,000. We have made some other adjustments in the budget, as you know. The juvenile detention center decreases for closing that facility, eliminating a couple positions. You guys eliminated some reserve funds that you had in your budget that have generated significant cost savings so that we could do these raises for our employees and include it in our budget. I have sent all of this over to Rodney, our auditor, and had him take a look at our budget. And he had very positive feedback on, on this budget. He, he felt it was very solid, had all the numbers in there that he expected to see. And most importantly, he said that he felt like this preserved the financial standing that we've been working very hard with keeping our reserve balances and keeping cash balances in these accounts. So as we move from year to year, we have cash to start the year with, and we're not concerned about getting into a cash basis violation by not having enough cash on hand in these funds to do business in January before we wait for our first distribution of tax revenue. So, all of these numbers are what we presented you guys at your budget study sessions. And, and we were very pleased that it only came in a little over a mil over what the revenue neutral rate was because the total cost of the raises were over $1 million, and we thought that it could be significantly higher than this. So I think Derek and I were very pleased to see that it was only a little over a mil over that.
Well, and, and I may be the only one that looks at this anymore, but, but I, I want to make sure it's crystal clear. Our mil is not going up. Like, if you look at what our mil levy is for 2022, it's 58. Like Franklin County's mil levy is actually, i-if you accept this budget, will come down over four mils, which is the biggest drop that we've seen in my time here. What Janet is saying, because we're under new legislation, is that technically, we're a little over a mil above revenue neutral. But gosh, when a mil's $325,000, and, and, you know, we've given, or proposing 1.4-ish million in raises, I think that's a testament to finding savings in other places. The testament to the staff that stay within their budget that, and what we've proposed, we feel like is a good balance between, I mean, we've found savings, but we also don't want to jeopardize 2024 and beyond. So we've got cash carryover still in this. We've got reserve transfers. We've sent it through Rodney, as she said, because we wanted that next set of eyes. And that's what's tricky about budgeting. It's, it's balancing the now versus the future. And we've got a lot of time into this, and we think this provides a pretty good balance.
I just would also add that, that this budget does include the payment of the software programs that, that we've discussed. And so that is already figured in here, too. So that's not going to have to come out of reserve funds. That's going to come out of, of our general budget. So there again, we're not jeopardizing our reserve funds. We're, we're continuing to try to pay for things as we go, to not incur new debt, but to preserve those balances. So if the need ever arises that we need to, to issue debt, we still have very good financial standing, so we get an excellent interest rate.
Before the meeting, and I was like, I was like, if we're only going up 1.3 over the revenue neutral, that's incredible with what we're doing with our budget.
Right. And, and I, and I, you know, we talk about the raises being a little over $1 million, but the fuel prices and the other increases that we put in public works because they were absolutely necessary to, to, you know, fund these departments for, for, just to, to drive out to sites, the sheriff's office, you know. I mean, we, we did make some increases for fuel. So I, like I said, Derek and I thought this was a, a really solid number, a good, solid budget where we don't jeopardize what we have moving into the net, to 2024, but very adequately provides for the 2023 budget.
Across the board, everything we buy, especially our five biggest things, probably fuel, labor, rock, software, healthcare, all up. It's the savings from probably paying off debt and what we did at the juvenile detention that kept the bill from me reflecting that, I guess. Definitely beat inflation. What, now, this is a different format than we're used to seeing, than, than we work with. Let's see, health, it shows quite a jump. I know what, we didn't, you know, almost double their budget. What did we move around to do that? I forget. I remember there's something, but.
Yeah, so if you'll remember when we discussed the health department's budget, she wants to add a nurse practitioner moving forward so that they can provide additional services that aren't otherwise provided in the community, but definitely under the purview of the health department. And so what story this doesn't tell, that if you go to the page in their budget that actually displays the health fund, is that they are, they are budgeting for additional revenue to, to compensate for that person. So really, all this page shows is the expenditures. But they are budgeting for increased revenue to cover that person for, for the coming year. Also, they have some residual funds from, you know, during the COVID time that they are using to come out of the pandemic and make sure that they're providing the services, even though maybe they don't have the increased revenue yet. So we have offset all of that, yes.
They're just giving themselves budget authority to do more business.
Absolutely. And that, and that's really important to note. One change that I did make, a, a small change, under a recommendation from Rodney, is the ambulance department, generally, we have to do a budget amendment at the end of the year for ambulance. So Rodney recommended that I make a slight change in the ambulance department. So I increased their revenues, which generally, their revenues come in higher. We just don't know what those will be. So conservatively, we don't want to show those revenues too high and not actually get those and budget to spend that. So I increased the revenue that they could potentially get and also increased their reserve transfer amount. So it's not budgeted to actually spend it in salaries or commodities or anything like that. But if the need is there and something happens, they have more budget authority. And, and Rodney felt that that was, that was a, a solid move, too, to make sure that we can cover the things in ambulance that, that they need. And like I said, you guys know, almost every year, we do a budget amendment for ambulance.
Frustrating. Thing about seeing numbers like this is on the far left, it's what we actually spend our actuals, which we always, you know, were responsible. We come in under budget. And the far right's obviously just our authority. It paints a picture that it's going up and, and at a pretty good clip. But I guess if you're a pessimist, that's what you see. If you're an optimist, you see, oh, they, you know, stay within, in the budget every year, so.
Absolutely. And we use those cash carryovers every year to, to reduce what we're levying. So I mean, if you look at just the general fund, for example, it shows budget authority for expenditures of 12 million, but we're only levying a little over 6 million. I mean, that's a testament to our department heads saving money and us having cash carryover to, to provide in that budget. So I think that that's really important to note.
This doesn't happen, and I, I know that you guys know this, but, but this doesn't happen overnight. I mean, this has taken years. It's taken years of buy-in from our department heads, staying within their budget, which increases cash carryover so that we can cash in on a little bit of that, so to speak, to keep our mil levy down like this. I'm, I say it every year, and I'm going to talk about it more at our budget hearing. But, but I'm proud of this. Like, I, I think this is a really good budget. Really good budget, all things considered, because we've had some, some pretty big projects and, and asks for the 23 budget year. And despite that, like, you know, we don't have much of an increase here, all things considered.
I think this is a good budget.
Thanks to the valuation going up quite a bit this year. That means things in Franklin County are happening, that things are being built and expanded on and improving. So that, that's a pretty big jump in valuation. I said one question, does, not being revenue neutral, does that trigger? I said one question, does, not being revenue neutral, does that trigger a notification to the public then?
Yes. So what we need today is to vote to exceed the revenue neutral rate and publish this budget as you see it here in the newspaper and get that information out to our public. And so that, by you voting today to exceed the revenue neutral rate, then I am compiling a list of all of those entities that are going to exceed the revenue neutral rate. And then by next Wednesday, I'll provide that to our printer, and they will generate the notices to mail out. You'll remember, the first two years of that notice are being paid for at the state level so that everyone has adequate time to budget reserves to pay for that in case the need arises after that to do, to exceed the revenue neutral rate. So I do already have some entities who have notified me that they plan to exceed the revenue neutral rate. So it won't be a notice with just Franklin County, but it will be a consolidated notice. So everyone in a particular taxing unit would be on the same notice, so.
When, just so the board understands, when is the deadline for having to have approval of this?
The deadline is next Wednesday. So if you guys don't feel comfortable with this today, you have any questions, do you want us to go back and work on something else? Do let us know. We have till next Wednesday to approve this. But next Wednesday is absolutely the deadline for approving this.
We pushed hard to get this in front of you today so that, you know, if you had questions, concerns, we would have another week. If you don't, that's great. I think Janet would appreciate, you know, being able to move forward now. But we do have a week if you would like us to look at something, do something different.
I'm sitting here thinking, food's gone up 50%. Gas has gone up over $2 a gallon in the last year. What we're proposing is, considering the rate of everything else that's been going on, this is very minimal, I think.
Our mil rate has only been lower than this two times in the last 22 years. The last time it was lower than, what we're proposing was 2006. And that was kind of a mistake year. It was, I think, the commission then cut way too deep and then had to shoot it back up the next year, but.
Do you have the?
Yeah, yeah, I've got them in front of me. 2006, it was the last time it was lower, but that was a blip, really. 2000 is the last time it was consistently lower than what it is proposed.
I would also add that the new tax policy does not give us any adjustment for inflation, CPI. The old tax plan used to give us an inflation for that, an inflation factor. The new tax policy does not give it. And probably more important, in my opinion than that, is new construction. And you think about the things that are going on around the county, all of the housing that has been built in the last year, the Dollar General down in Princeton. I mean, we've had significant development in the last year, and the new tax policy does not give us any leeway for that, to capitalize on the new construction. And we still have to provide services to all those new houses, those new businesses. And so we're adding more, more people, more service, more services to businesses and expected to do that with the same amount of tax revenue in that year. So I think that only increasing a little over a mil and not making any adjustments in that for inflation and for new construction, I think is something really important to note.
Well, I for one don't need another week to think about it. I think this is a good, good deal. Do you have a comment, sir?
I think it's commendable that we did what we did, or the staff did what they did, you know, and then we approved what they did. Because away, everything is skyrocketing, the price of everything, and still keep it at a number that you would think would be a normal year, or a little off-normal, not an extremely off-normal. So we're doing it an extremely off-normal time. And with wages, our wages we had to do and everything else and expenses, it sounds to me like we did the best we could do, or they have to do the best they could do.
We sat through a day and a half of budget hearings, and we went through all these numbers. So unless you added things, I don't see why we would need to do anything.
And it's important to note, and correct me if I'm wrong, Janet, but we could always come down from this number, so we just can't go above it. So, you know, I know we've talked about the software project and some of those costs, and we're still continuing to look at that. What's in here, we think, is the worst-case scenario. So if we refine this more, we can always come down. So keep that in mind. This is just the cap that you would be approving today.
Right.
Does anyone feel like we need another week to chew on this, or? So Janet, what kind of motion?
So we would need a motion to exceed the revenue neutral rate and publish our budget at 53.843 mils. And, yep, that's it.
Okay, you heard what the motion was saying. Would you like to make that motion?
I'll make that motion.
Second.
Commissioner Dickinson?
Yeah.
Commissioner Waymire?
Yes.
Commissioner Sotomayor?
Yes.
Commissioner Harris?
Yes.
Sheridan.
Maybe doing it a week early, it kind of throws the gauntlet down to the other taxing entities and saying, hey, we're reducing our mil, so.
You know, I have got correspondence from, you know, quite a few of the cities, and they are trying to get it done, you know, a little bit early, too, so they have a little bit of flexibility also. But, you know, just, it's an interesting tax policy to try to live under, and so they've had a lot of questions. And ultimately, a couple of the entities have had to go back and have special sessions with their councils to make sure that they are meeting all the requirements of this. So I've been working really closely with various city clerks, and we have been meeting this week in my office with all of the different cemetery districts, townships, all of those budgets that we prepare. And they do have a lot of questions and have had a lot of questions in advance of coming in for that budget meeting, which normally they don't. Normally, they just come in, we sit down, we prepare a budget, they take it back, and they're very confident in what they're doing. But this year, they've had a lot of questions. And even after some of them left on Monday after doing their meeting with Betsy and I, then they went back, conferred with other people that they needed to confer with and called me back with more questions. So it's very complicated. So I do appreciate you guys approving it a week in advance so we can get this all ironed out and get ready to move forward.
Good deal. Thank Janet, thanks Derek on this. That concludes your business day. Staff report, Derek, do you?
Yeah, just quickly, I'll jump back into budget for just a sec. So what will happen now, once we get this published, we'll continue. We need to get David Arterberry started on some of the fees and stuff, the ARPA stuff that we've talked about, and we'll do that. We'll continue to make small refinements, and we're aiming for probably first week in September for actual budget approval.
Yep. So you'll, well, you'll see on here, on this, it says, well, it didn't print on this one, September 13th is the date that was on your agenda for the budget hearing.
If you have any questions in the meantime about it, please let us know. But, you know, you took a pretty big step today.
This is September 7th. The proposed date for the hearing is September 7th, 2022.
It's either the first or second week of September, be the 7th or 13th, somewhere right in there.
Second week is the 7th.
What was on the cover sheet?
Yeah. What day of the week is it usually?
Usually do it on Wednesday.
Yeah, 7th, then.
Later this morning, I have a phone call with Tyler Ellsworth. I'm having discussions with him. So Tyler represents, obviously, he represents the county and the city of Ottawa. He also represents the city of Wellsville. I'm going to have discussions with him about assisting on putting a written agreement together for the ambulance station project, for the dispatch participation. I like to, on something like this, that is going in theory transcend, you know, my time here, your time here, I like to have a second set of eyes to make sure that we are considering everything. Wellsville's super supportive of that, just using him as almost just a transaction lawyer to help formalize the agreement. So I haven't committed to doing anything with him. It's just, we're having a discussion about it today. I think he's indicated he would like to help, so I'll have that discussion with him. But, so that project is in the process of moving forward. And that's, unless you have any questions about that, that's really all I have today.
Did you have any work forward anymore with our ARPA? The, we were gonna, the guy that we used before?
Yeah, so he, I have had discussions with him, Janet and I have. Got a contract from him that I need to renew or need to review. His original proposal, I did not find palatable. He had a very high not-to-exceed number. I think what he currently sent is a contract not to exceed like 15,000. And he's told me that other counties, he's helped with ARPA, that he's done a year's worth of work, it hasn't exceeded like 3,000. So once I have the chance to review that, that will likely be something, $15,000 is a lot more palatable than what I saw before. So once I have the chance.
For the whole 4.8 million dollar?
Yes.
Oh, yeah, absolutely.
So all of the programming that we would do with ARPA, we would get his sign off under an agreement not to exceed 15,000. And he's telling me we shouldn't even come close to that. So I think if nothing else for Janet and I, just having that additional peace of mind that comes from that stamp of.
That per year, or is that for the, for the whole?
I think it's a one-year agreement, but we, I think it would just roll over. Like, I don't think it's going to get close to 15,000.
Imagine that's to protect him if, I mean, you could split that much money 200 ways and then just make a mountain of work for him, or you could use the majority of it to pay off debt and then split the remaining 10 ways and.
That's exactly.
Yeah, right, right, right.
So yes, that's, thank you for asking, Ian. That's a great question. And yes, that's another one that will probably be in front of you shortly, just as we continue to refine what we're doing with ARPA. That's all I have.
Okay, yeah. Heard of horror stories about percentages and all that with ARPA consults.
What?
With consults for ARPA money and the percentages they charge. Outrageous stuff, so I'm glad you're looking into that side of the thing.
Yeah, yeah, no. And I know that's been an issue with some other counties. And fortunately, compared to the CARES Act, the CARES Act was a lot more complex. ARPA has allowed us, and we've talked about this, not to get into the weeds, but basically claim revenue loss. And that takes away so many of the restrictions. So I, yeah, I don't think it'll be an expensive proposition at all.
Thank you, Derek.
You bet.
Kristi, anything else? Kyle? Thanks for coming in. Congratulations again. Kyle, do you got anything? Jeff, anything else?
I just want to say thanks once again for approving that, the SRO contract. I do think it's going to allow us to provide better service and then strengthen that what we've discussed is already a good working relationship and partnership that we have with that school district there. This is fair season, so we just got done Richmond Fair last weekend. We had staff down there for that. And we have the county fair that's going on this week as well. It'll probably be a little loud in town Saturday night with the Derby and all of that. So we do have, we do have those going on as well. So it's a little warm, so hopefully everybody's drinking lots of water when they go out to those things. You discussed a little bit when you're talking budgets things about the JDC, so I just wanted to update you where we were. We'd been asked if, you know, if we had some room, and we worked with Ken as far as helping some of his staff and hiring some of his staff over. And we did hire one of the juvenile detention officers is going to be coming over as a corrections officer later this month. And so I believe all those, all of those employees from over there have found their, found employment someplace. And so we're excited about the staff member that, our new staff member to be coming over. I think he's going to be a good fit for us over at the jail, and he's been a part of this organization for a couple of years now. So we think that's going to be good for us. Also, Ken's worked with our jail staff as far as going through. He's been organizing a lot of things and getting things stored up, but there's a lot of supplies, like jail supply type things, that if they sit, they're just, they're probably just going to go bad. And so he's worked with our staff, our staff's been with him to what the things that we can use in our facility, or those things have been transferred over to the jail so that we can, so that we're able to get use out of those things. And so that work, I'm sure, will continue as they continue on in their process over there. But just wanted to kind of update you as to where we are on that. Those things are pretty good. And then a couple of weeks ago, we had the National Sheriff's Conference up in Kansas City. Under Sheriff and I, attended that, as well as our jail commander, Lieutenant Alexander, attended that as well. There's some good training through that, and I talked with Janet a little bit. One of the training classes I went to was about election security. So I believe, I feel that our upcoming primary election will probably be the biggest turnout that I've ever seen in a primary in Kansas, and at least in this county in my, in my lifetime, or at least voting lifetime. And there are some, there are some, you know, high emotions because of some questions that are on the ballot in August. So I thought it was important to go to that training class. It got some good information, some good ideas. Janet and I have talked just briefly about that, but I have met with the county attorney and the police chiefs so to make sure that we are all going to be on the same page. And then we're gonna, I need to get with Janet so we can kind of organize a sit-down with all of us together. So I just wanted to assure you, you all, that we're ahead, we're trying to be ahead of the game here and get a game plan in place. We don't, I don't believe we have any election security issues here, but we want to make sure we're keeping everyone safe and that everyone is on board and that we are presenting something that allows the public to understand that we have safe and secure voting here in Franklin County. And so that's where we're headed on, headed on that. I just wanted to update the board on that. So if you have any questions for me, I'm happy to answer.
I assume you had a little activity downtown Saturday afternoon?
Yes, yes. It was.
I had full view of it. I was driving through on my tractor.
It was mostly, mostly peaceful. No one got hurt. It got a little rowdy a couple of times, but.
It sounded like it was getting louder.
Yeah.
I threw in the middle of the day, it was hardly much going on.
Yeah.
Come back through toward the end of the day, it was rowdy.
Yeah, yeah. So, and those are, those are the type of things that we're making, that we want to make sure that, that we continue to have, to have a handle on so that it continues with nobody, nobody getting hurt and nothing getting torn up.
I think you said as much, Jeff, but I believe that the JDC employee that you hired was the last remaining employee who hadn't figured out what they wanted to do. So Jeff, I commend you and appreciate you hiring him. The county attorney hired one, and then the others made choices to pursue other opportunities and have all gotten them. We, you know, we did what we said we were going to do. We offered them. And so I think every single one of those employees now is gainfully employed again.
That's my understanding as well.
And were two of them at to the department, the corrections? Do they, the, with Dustin's group, did they?
Yeah, so we're still working through that. Yes, so we're still working through that, but yes, what, what you approved was, yes, an assistant director position and a full-time intake. So yes, the two of them are going to transition over there too.
Yep.
Yep.
Thank you. Sheriff. Janet, it's election time.
Yeah, it is. Just, just one more item. Ian's right, I did put on there that September seventh would be our hearing date. Do you guys prefer six o'clock or seven o'clock?
Six o'clock.
Any, any objections to that? Six o'clock, okay, that's a time that I'll publish soon. Yes, election time. We have been very busy. Sheriff Richards discussed with the emotions of the upcoming primary election and the special question that's on the ballot. I've let you guys know in this meeting previously that everyone will have a ballot in, even though it's a primary election. And ordinarily, only two parties are recognized in the primary election, so you would have to be affiliated with one of those parties to vote in a primary. That's not the case in this primary election. There will be a ballot for everyone, whether you decide to affiliate with a party or not. So if you're registered with the Libertarian Party, which is a party that's not recognized in the primary, you still have that special question ballot. And if you are unaffiliated and do not want to affiliate, you would get that special question ballot also. So there is a ballot for everyone. That being said, today is advanced ballot day, so we will be working very hard this afternoon to get all those advanced ballots out the door that we have. We have roughly two hundred permanent advanced voters. That means people who are homebound or in a nursing home or something like that, can't get out to vote, have medical issues that don't allow them to get out very often. They can get an advanced ballot at their house for every election. So we have a little over two hundred on that list of voters, and we have received numerous single advance applications, people who are going to be out of town for vacation on August second and want to get an advanced ballot. You know, people who just don't feel like they can get to the polls because of their jobs or things like that can apply for a single advanced ballot. So we have a lot of those. So we're going to be working really hard this afternoon to get all those out. Other counties in our state have had problems getting their ballots printed and here on time, just because of the delay for redistricting and just paper shortages and things like that. Not the case here. We have our ballots, we're ready to go today. So we will start advanced voting in the office on Monday. So for those people that don't want to get a ballot in the mail, they'll be able to start coming in and early voting in my office on Monday. We do have some evening hours and Saturday that we'll be voting too. So there's lots of opportunities for people to get, get out and vote. So we're finishing up with all of our townships, cemeteries, and fire districts, getting all of their budgets prepared, so we can wrap up the budget season by next Wednesday. So we have done most of those, but we have a few more to catch up on tomorrow, or later this afternoon, sorry, later this afternoon.
And if you wanted to register to vote, it's too late.
Yesterday was the deadline to register to vote, so, but you still can apply for an advanced ballot. Just, we'll send out the initial batch today, but we'll continue sending those out as ballot applications come. So I would encourage anyone who has questions, just to give my office a call. One more note, you probably all got your voter registration card in the mail over the weekend, so that is something that we did in conjunction with redistricting that only happens once every ten years. Our, all of our voting districts changed this, this time because we always voted for the second congressional district, and now we're voting, everyone in the county is voting for the third congressional district. So that was a change that was for everyone. And then more than half of the voters in our county switched from Senate District Twelve to Senate District Three, and from State School Board District Nine to State School Board District Four. And then for a lot of Dawn's Commission District, they switched from House District Five to House District Fifty-nine, except for Wellsville. So now our county is all represented by the Fifty-ninth House District, except for Franklin Township and Wellsville. So there were a lot of changes, so we felt that was really important to get that out to the voters, so we sent out that card that has all their voting districts on it. And then just a confirmation for them to say, this is the address you're registered at, and it's going to really help us clean up everybody off the voter rolls. We've had a lot of calls saying, oh, my kid moved to a different state, how do, how do you get them off? So we're going to be able to get those things cleaned up, and I'm really excited about that.
And if I wanted to see what my ballot looked like, where do I go?
Oh, great question. So if you go to votecansas.gov or voteks.org, those two will route you to the same website, and you can choose the voter view option. And when you choose that option, you'll enter your first and last name and your birth date, and it will bring up your voter registration. Again, so you can confirm everything on your voter registration is correct, but also it will have your ballot options there. So it will show you all three ballots that are available, and you just choose the option that, that you intend to vote. So they put all three of them on there, so if you're unaffiliated and you decide to affiliate, you can see the Republican or the Democrat ballot, but also, so if, if you are registered with a party, you would be able to see what other people at your polling location could vote on also. Lots going on in my office.
You have a Dropbox in Wellsville?
We do not have the Dropbox in Wellsville this year. We have put that out in the past. We were kind of in a time crunch there at the end of the session, the legislature deciding what they were going to do about requiring cameras on the Dropbox. So we may put that out for the general, but we did not put it out for the primary. We just didn't feel like there was enough time to get policies in place for that.
You're saying when your in-office voting starts?
Monday.
Monday.
Mm-hmm. And we'll do that during office hours, and then we do have late nights, and I will get those posted for everyone to see. We have four, four nights until seven o'clock, and then the Saturday before the primary, which I believe is the thirtieth, will be in the office from nine to one on that Saturday for folks to come out and, and vote on a Saturday if they, you know, work during the week, out of town, and, and need some Saturday time.
Okay, thanks Janet for the update. Now, Don, do you want to start us off?
I don't have a lot, but we go into Wellsville on May tonight. But it goes around till May the other night, and they're working on some grant funds to, one of the things they wanted to do down there is replace water lines in the city, which has been something they've been working on for a long time. They do, they're having some issues with some people wanting to vacate some outies down there, selling their properties off, and, and it, some of them end up with five parcels on, with a house, and in their time to walk through that issue down there. That's it, I guess. Let's bet, say.
Speaking of, Sheriff said something about the fair. I do, we're having a Kansas Livestock Association's putting on barbecue again this year. It's been a couple of years off, and it's kind of strange getting it back going, but it's going to be good. And it'll be on Friday night instead of Thursday night, along with the cattle show, so that's all I got.
Starting at four? Does it start, I think it starts at four? It's, on the schedule, it starts at four, anyway.
Yeah, I think that's pretty normal. Yeah, sounds good.
Good deal.
I got the smoker, the boys, they pulled the smoker out of storage and they flipped it on, like the motor still works, so we're good to go.
That's not on my calendar, are you putting it on there?
Yeah, Friday night, come to the fair.
It's usually Thursday night every year, you know, on Thursday, some reason it's on the Friday.
Yeah.
I went to the city of Princeton meeting, and Janet was there. Seeing these poor people trying to understand the revenue neutral rate is, it was, you know, just trying to even comprehend what, what they're up. Basically, they've left, their budget has been the same dollar-wise for years and years. It needed to be raised, they have more expenses, but they just didn't figure out anyway, so they, they have options now, and, and that even makes it harder. So anyway, I think they were probably one of those, they had to do a special meeting to figure out what they were going to do. The Chamber had their meeting yesterday morning. They didn't have a lot, they did, they have a new leadership class, I think they have like eighteen, and I think at least one or two deputies are going to be in the leadership class, maybe, I'm not sure. Anyway, they didn't actually announce the, the names, but they did say that that was part of it. The city of Ottawa is continuing to work with their budget, and one of the things they're doing this year that they really haven't done in the past is reserves. You know, they haven't been putting things in reserve, and so at the beginning of the year, they're kind of scrambling to see if they're going to have, you know, anyway, so that is something that they're trying to put into their budget this year. One of the things that came down the last couple of weeks is that the state Supreme Court sided with the appraisers, and how big box stores are appraised, where they, we call it the dark store theory, they were trying to use buildings that were older, had been abandoned, they wanted to use as a comps for their appraisal values, and the state Supreme Court said, no, the way that the appraisers have been doing it is correct, and we need to go back and, and look at those again. So that was really, it wasn't really a win for the county, it was just, I think it was kind of a.
Voided catastrophe?
Well, no, but it was also kind of a kudos to the appraisers that, look, this is, this, these are your roles, this is how you were doing it, and you did it right. And I think that that was, I mean, anyway.
I think, and I agree with all of that, I agree with what you said, Cole. I, I think that the counties and the appraisers will breathe a little bit easier. So what the Supreme Court did was remand it back to the Court of Appeals with instructions. We need to see the Court of Appeals follow those instructions, and presumably they'll do that and create that precedent, and then the appraisers will have that precedent to point out and say, and in theory, that would be the end of the dark store, but we, we have to let that happen first. So, but yes, it, it should be a huge win for counties, for sure.
Awesome. And then the other, only other thing is, I just wanted to give my condolences to one of our department heads who lost his mother yesterday, and that is all I have.
Nothing.
Nothing, Cole?
Nothing I need to add, nothing to take the time up with.
Okay. I went to the Chamber of Coffee for Louis Reed, and I made it perfectly clear that I was there as a friend and not a representative of the county at the, Louis Reed had just announced his candidacy for Fifty-ninth District. And again, I just wanted to make it perfectly clear that I was there just as a friend and not a representative of Franklin County. So that's, that's how, I know David and he and Paul Bean are at an important meeting, is it today?
Yeah.
In Wichita, over this huge amount of money Kansas got for the infrastructure, uh, help around, around the state account, I think it was like eight, eight billion dollars or.
Yeah, it's a lot.
Some fantastic number, so. Anyway, that's all I have, so if anybody entertained a motion to.
Second.
One favor?